Good morning, everyone, and welcome. Today is Tuesday, May 23, 2023, and we're welcoming you to the opening of a regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County. It is an absolutely beautiful day today in Manatee County, and we're going to start the day, the meeting, the way we always do. We're going to start by honoring God and by honoring our great nation. Today, delivering the prayer will be Ray Bellamy, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Marine Corps veteran and acting county administrator Lee Washington. So at this time, if you're able, please stand.
Father, we'd just like to thank you for this opportunity to give back to our community, to serve, more importantly, the commitment that we have toward each other, care and respect, and holding on to each other, guiding us, guiding our minds, guiding our words, picking them very carefully so that we might be able to do the best thing holistically for our community. We ask that you continue to look after the people that make decisions, and sometimes they are tough decisions, a decision that has to be made, but in the fairness, in the love, and in the grace of you. We ask all of these things, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Washington, would you please read announcements and changes and updates to today's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you, and good morning. Updates to the agenda dated May 19, 2023. Awards and presentations, proclamations, proclamations, item number three, adoption and presentation of the proclamation designating June 2, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Manatee County. This agenda item was added to the agenda. Changes to the consent agenda, clerk of the consent, item number four, approval of the clerk's consent agenda dated May 23, 2023. This agenda item was updated with a revised clerk's consent agenda. Administrator, item number five, approval of the revised 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting schedule. This agenda item was updated with a further revised meeting schedule to add an additional work session date on August 3 and a land use date of August 24, 2023. Development services, item number 11, approval of final plat and associated documents for Cedar Mill. This agenda item was updated with a clean copy of the Declaration of Covenants, conditions and restrictions of Cedar Mill. Item 12, approval of final plat and associated documents for Mandarin Grove District 1. This agenda item was updated to add the following: accept, execute, and record the maintenance agreement of right-of-way improvements for Mandarin Grove 1. Item 14, determination of consistency with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan, SMR Taylor Ranch Elementary School Site, Charles Andrews, CNU-A, AICP, Principal Planner, District 5. This agenda item was updated with written correspondence from Glenn Gibellino. Item 16, determination of consistency with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan, Ry Ranch Elementary School Site, Charles Andrews, CNU-A, AICP, Principal Planner, District 1. The agenda item was updated with written correspondence from Glenn Gibellino. Natural resources, item 26, approval of the Tampa Bay Estuary Program mini-grant in the amount of $4,000 and adoption of Budget Amendment Resolution B-23-110. This agenda item was updated to correct a typo on the cover sheet from B-23-XYZ to Property management, item 31, adoption of Resolution R-23083, declaration of public hearing on July 25, 2023, to vacate a portion of plat right-of-way known as hibernia within the Floriana Court Plat, which is in District 2. The agenda item was updated to correct a typo on the cover sheet from July 25, 2203 to July 25, 2023. Public works, item 35, adoption of Resolution R-23-087, authorizing permit on only, permit only parking in designated parking spaces along Gulf Drive, 6th Street South and 13th Street South on Bradenton Beach for the South Bradenton Beach Gravity System Relocation Project. This agenda item was updated to correct the cover sheet to include the words "Resolution- R-23-087" in the subject and action requested areas. Advertise public hearings, presentations upon request, financial management, item 40, adoption of resolution R-23085 regarding the infrastructure sales tax to add projects in the transportation category and adoption of Budget Amendment Resolution B-23-112. This agenda item was updated to revise the agenda cover sheet to change the dollar amount for Buffalo Road Imperial Circle to Bobby Jones Court Sidewalk from $155,161 to $532,273 and include a clean copy of the Budget Amendment Resolution. Advertise public hearings, presentation scheduled, Convention and Visitors Bureau, item 42, adoption of ordinance 23-59, amending the Section 2-29-21 of the Code of Laws of Manatee County, Florida, providing for a tourist development plan pursuant to the Section 125-0104-3I Florida statutes. This agenda item was updated with a revised ordinance. Regular agenda, financial management, item 46, approval of American Rescue Plan changes and establishment of the General Fund Government Services payroll FY24 for generational impact projects. This agenda item was updated with written correspondence from Glenn Gibellino. Utilities, item 49, former, approval of the Franchise Hall or amendments. This agenda item was deleted from the agenda. County attorney comments, County Attorney William Clegg. Item 50, authorization to proceed with national search for a county administrator. This agenda item was added to the agenda. Updates to the agenda dated May 22, 2023, invocation was removed for Pastor Randy Vezik for Bayside Community Church due to scheduling conflict. Awards and presentations and proclamations, item three, adoption and presentation of proclamation designating June 2, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Manatee County. This agenda item was updated with a revised proclamation. Those are all the updates, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, we're going to go a little out of order today. We have special guests in the Bradenton Kiwanis Club, so we're going to jump ahead to item number 49, which is the acceptance of donation from the Bradenton Kiwanis Club for an all-inclusive ADA playground at Tom Bennett Park, which is located, I believe, in District 5. Is that correct? No? District 2. Okay. District 2. It has changed. Who is here from sports and leisure to present? Oh, goodness, look at the check. We'll bring sports and leisure in more often.
Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Washington, Mr. Clegg, Carmine D'Amelio, Deputy Director of Parks and Grounds with Property Management, and also the ADA Compliance Coordinator. We have something really cool for you and exciting this morning. I'm here to announce an amazing and substantial donation by the Bradenton Kiwanis Club. Their intent is to design and install a playground, but not just an ordinary playground. This playground has been designed for all abilities. The implements and features will allow play for the entire disabled community. This is a very passionate group. I work closely with them. Neil Unruh led the group, and he's not here with us this morning, but we have some representatives from the Kiwanis Club behind me. Now I'd like to introduce Vice Mayor of the City of Bradenton, Jane Cotchard, to speak and introduce and tell a little story about it. We also have a little video that we're going to play as well. Jane?
Good morning. In celebration of 100 years of Bradenton Kiwanis's accomplishments, which helped further a better Bradenton, I too want to thank you and all of our staff for your help in planning and design of this special playground. I'm hopeful that this will bring our whole community together with play, all the while helping those with disabilities have fun, further their development, and a true sense of belonging, as well as helping others in the community embrace the values of inclusion. This is an exciting morning for all of us with Kiwanis, and I'm going to introduce our president, our president incoming, Andy Minor, who has a letter from President Unruh to read.
Good morning, Commissioners. Honorable Commissioners, County Administrator, and fellow Bradenton Kiwanian, County Administrator Lee Washington, Commissioner George Cruz, and Chairman Van Osterbridge. On behalf of Neil Unruh, I'm very excited as the Bradenton Kiwanis Club to provide this legacy gift to the county as part of our celebration of 100 years to procure and build an accessible and inclusive playground, the Bradenton Kiwanis Playground at Tom Bennett Park. Our club, and especially our playground committee consisting of Neil Unruh, Jane Coker, Ron Springer, Susan Agruso, Ken Jamison, and Danielle Crawford, have been working with staff to provide for nearly nine months. We would like to thank Carmine D'Amelio and the rest of the Manti County staff who helped provide and guide and shape the Bradenton Kiwanis vision to where we are today. We also want to thank Matt Gaggen and ARC for putting together a proposal that works for Bradenton Kiwanis and the community. Bradenton Kiwanis takes on the Kiwanis tradition of helping one children, one community at a time. This will impact this community, and hopefully many children, of all ages and abilities as we play together as one. Our history is well stated. For the last 100 years, this will put a stamp on the next 100 years. Please accept this big check on behalf of Bradenton Kiwanis.
We just need you to sign it.
Thank you so much. We were going to take it even if you didn't sign it. So I, I'm going to open this up to public comment because we do have to, there is an action on this, so we're going to open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward at this time to comment on item number 49 on today's agenda? Oh, and the video's going. I apologize. Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment at this time and enjoy the video.
Matt, would you like to come down and talk about some of the features?
Sure. Good morning. So as this thing, this video spins around...
I do need you to state your name for the record.
Oh, Matt Gagnon, Advanced Recreational Concepts, Manti County resident, Paris, Florida. So as this video spins around, you'll see there's a lot going on, okay? What the, the main focus, as the Kiwanis group really wanted, was play for all abilities and the disabled community. But not only regular play, as you, you know, everybody's seen slides and, you know, panels and basic climbers, we wanted to add complete uniqueness to the playground. So you'll see as it spins around, that playground unit, you'll see there's slides, regular climbing, multiples of nets for different types of upper body development. You'll see there's a climbing wall. You'll see there's a merry-go-round. The cool thing about the merry-go-round is you can actually get onto it with a wheelchair. So a wheelchair can actually access the merry-go-round. You have that unit right there is for the little guys. You'll see there's a little table where they can sit together. Zip line. You have a double zip line. The reason for the double zip line is one of the zip lines has a belt swing, like if you're on a swing, that'll zip you to into a corner. The other zip line has an accessible seat, so for all abilities, all children can get actually access that zip line. Let's see, what else? Lots of shade, that's important, of course, in Florida. Sensory, so you'll see there's, as this thing spins around, you'll see there's some flowers. They're actually music flowers, where you actually hit the pedals on the actual flowers, and it makes notes, music notes. So there's some sensory there, especially in the ramps. If you look at the ramps on each unit, you'll see that there's panels. Those panels are for cognitive ability, you know, move, movement, visual. We try to really hit every aspect of play. And most importantly, the surfacing. The surfacing is synthetic turf, which meets all safety guidelines and accessibility guidelines. So that is very important. Any questions?
We do have your district commissioner. Commissioner Ballard is on the board.
So I, I don't have any questions, but I do just want to, to thank the Bradenton Kiwanis Club for this really generous gift. Every child in Manatee County, regardless of, of ability, deserves a, a safe and fun place to play, and I feel really grateful and happy to have the opportunity to have, have this great playground in my district. So thank you guys very much.
I want it back.
Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say, you know, a huge thank you for all the work that went into this, and I mean, that is a big check. That is significant. And so many times, there, there can be angles, you know? Somebody wants to give something, but there's obviously something. But this is just people doing the right thing because they care about others, and that's something I've seen from, you know, our Parks and Rec Department so many times, but definitely from Bradenton Kiwanis. So, and if you're, you know, watching this, you're not familiar with this group, this is a stand-up organization. Really appreciate you being here today and setting this up for children to enjoy. So thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. I'm next on the board. So a lot's been said about Kiwanis as an organization. I'm one of two members of the board who are members of Kiwanis, this particular Kiwanis Club, and the club goes back 100 years. And contributions include such a large variety of things, everything from Camp Flying Eagle, State Road 70. A lot of people don't realize that the Bradenton Kiwanis Club was integral in, in the creation of State Road 70. It was Bradenton Arcadia Road back in the day. But contributions made to, whether it's the Arts Center, but it, it just goes on and on and on. Most of it centered around children because Kiwanis is for kids, and that's, that's our motto. It's always been the motto of Kiwanis. And it's, it's days like this when you're incredibly proud of the people that, you know, you've surrounded yourself with and the organizations you're a member of, and I'm, I'm so proud of Bradenton Kiwanis for doing this. When we were working on the site location, just sort of, sort of get into the weeds a little bit, this site was chosen, it's not actually in the city of Bradenton, and it's the Bradenton Kiwanis Club, but everybody sort of rose above that and decided that this location was right on state, right off of State Road 64 and right off of I-75. And it's more than just a Bradenton asset, it's a county asset, and it's like a regional asset. So, you know, talking to Tom Waters, who runs Easter Seals, he's telling me that he's going to bring his kids up here on field trips because they don't have anything like this at Easter Seals, and that's Commissioner Ron's district in South County. And so it's accessible from the north to the south on 75, and the east and the west on State Road 64. Commissioner Ballard is fortunate to have it in her district, but it's accessible from all districts of the county for all kids in Manatee County. So anyway, I'm just, I'm incredibly proud of, of the Kiwanis and of this government for partnering with Bradenton Kiwanis on this. We have a motion, Madam Clerk, by Commissioner Ballard, to approve, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Van Austinbridge. We can cast our votes at this time. We're going to have to take Commissioner Baugh as a yes. Okay, so it passes unanimously, Madam Clerk, by a vote of seven to zero. All right, Commissioners, oh, yes, ma'am? Yes, Councilwoman, we always extend the courtesy to an elected official.
I just think we'd be remiss if we didn't point out that in, through the entire design phase, we have intended for this to be the beginning. So there is, we are designing this with the hope that we will incluse, have even more later, and we do have some great funding opportunities, so I feel like we need to make sure everybody realizes that.
Yes, ma'am, I'm glad you brought that up. Carmine, you all had to sort of scale it back because as often happens around here, you know, the price starts jumping on us and getting out of hand, and so everybody did a great job of scaling it back. Carmine and Molly did a fantastic job working with Bradenton Kiwanis on this project, so just super proud of everybody, and I can't wait to see future additions. Shall we all go down there? Oh, Mr. Minor, yes, sir.
Yeah, I would just like one, one more thing to recognize. We have several Bradenton Kiwanian members in the audience today, so if you're a member of the Bradenton Kiwanis Club, would you please stand up?
Thank you so much.
I'm glad you did that because I completely forgot that our county administrator is a member of the Bradenton Kiwanis Club until he stood up. All right, Commissioners, should we go down there and accept the check?
I want a picture with that big old check.
Absolutely.
One, two, and three. It's good. One, two, three. Very nice. And one more. One, two, and three. Good job, guys.
Yep, got everything. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to recess the county commission meeting, and we are going to open up a port authority meeting and turn this over to Commissioner Cruz. We're in recess.
You're not going to gavel? Welcome to the Port Authority Meeting of Seaport Manatee. Today, as we've been doing once a quarter, we've been meeting down at the port for longer meetings, but the rest of the time we've been meeting here primarily for consent to keep the doors open and business moving forward. So we're calling this to, to order, and we typically start a public comment, but we'll just do that at the end because it's traditionally just consent here. So Commissioners, we only have one item. It's simply consent, items A through I. Did anyone want to pull anything from consent?
No, sir.
So, no, we have nothing pulled from consent. So we'll take public comment on consent, then we'll vote on consent, and then I'll turn it over to you, Carlos, to, to speak. So is there any public comment on Seaport Manatee business? Of course there is. Glenn, state, state your name and your county or residence, and you have three minutes exactly.
For the, for the record, for the record, Glenn Gibellino. It is a beautiful Florida day. You know what else it is today? It's sunny. So I had sent this to all of you about the list of ports that currently use renewable energy, okay? So we have, we have San Diego, New Jersey. You know, New Jersey, snow, wind, cold. They make the numbers work. They make the numbers work. So I don't know why, you know, I went back through my old YouTube. Nine years I've been toting solar out at the port with zero traction. So I think it's time. LA, thousands of solar panels, thousands of solar panels. So we need to move in that direction. Seattle, cold, windy, far less sunny days than Port Manatee. They make the numbers work. So I don't know what I'm missing here, but we've got a hell of a lot of sunshine, and we're not using it. Carbon emissions, they, diesel trucks go in there, take those containers out, you know, think about, I think about sending that check to FPNL, which I don't like. So I just would urge this board, George, to direct the administrator to look into Port in Crispy, they've got extra land, so do we. They're putting in a solar farm. They're going to generate their own electric. We have hundreds of thousands of square feet out at the port that is underutilized. So can all these ports be wrong? Let's find out. You want to shut me up? Show me the numbers, say, Glenn, that's a great idea. Those poor other ports must have got all sorts of grants and subsidies, but we just can't make it work here. That's all I'm asking. Do, call in a top solar manufacturer, installer, and I know them all, go out to the port, do an assessment, come back and say, Glenn, it won't work, or Glenn, I don't know why we didn't listen to you nine years ago, because that system would have been paid off by now. So let's not get mad at a 10% return, and then after 25 years, you own the system forever. And I've pulled FPNL records from the port. It's tens of thousands of dollars every day, and with the new container for... And with the new container facility coming in, three-phase power, that electric bill is gonna jump. So, as the port expands, we need to lessen our carbon footprint. So, George, it's in your wheelhouse. Hopefully, you'll reach out to some of them. Best copies for you if you ever want to talk to those port guys. And I'll hand this in for the record. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Glenn. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and I will entertain motions for approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, you, Thatcher, myself, on the board to speak.
Oh, I don't even, I don't have your little screen. All right, Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here to all the Port Authority. I think, you know, I'm glad that we brought that up, just for, so that everyone's on the same page. Manatee County has the largest solar battery in the world. We're talking acres and acres and acres of batteries, and we're talking hundreds of acres of solar fields and solar panels. Now, the question of whether or not this is a financially feasible or stable operation moving forward, I'll leave that debate to another day. But just realize that we're talking literally hundreds of acres of solar fields here in Manatee County, operated by FPL, that are, you know, working their best to provide energy. Of course, they still, in order for us to be able to turn on our air conditioning and take care of our family and our needs at our homes, they still have other ways of generating power at FPL that still need to be used. I don't know that it would be very smart at all for Manatee County, or the port, or the United States of America to put every single egg in that basket yet. It's not, doesn't seem to be ready for primetime. Still seems to be heavily subsidized by a federal government that is printing money that is no longer worth what it was yesterday. So, but, as far as, you know, moving in that direction and setting things up to where it could happen in the future, I'm open to if that technology ever becomes financially viable. And they're really doing great things, you know, at FPL here in Manatee County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Van Austinbridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, I'm gonna agree with a lot of what Commissioner Thatcher said. I mean, we're a community that embraces solar. Our power plant out in Parrish is something for the rest of the country to emulate. In Lakewood Ranch, there's a community that's putting in its own solar field, and the entire community will be powered off of that solar field. In District Three, in Village of Cortez, we have Hunter's Point, which is energy, most energy-efficient homes in the world, and they can operate and do operate off the grid and entirely self-sufficient off of solar. So, we are open to those things, and we do have warehouses, which, you know, potentially could have solar panels on top of them. And that's something that I defer to Carlos to look into and decide if it's viable or not. I don't, however, it's not common for me to look to New Jersey, Los Angeles, and Seattle as, you know, communities or, you know, governments where the question was, could they all be wrong? Absolutely, they frequently are. So, I'm not sure that we want to model ourselves after them. I think we have good things happening in Manatee County, and I would prefer to model it after the more efficient ways of doing this that are taking place already in Manatee County. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. No one else is on the board. We have, Madam Clerk, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. You can all cast your votes now. And Madam Clerk is approved unanimously, seven to zero. And with that, I will turn it over to our Executive Director, Carlos, for any comments you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, just a heads up, our next Port Authority meeting, as we discussed, Mr. Chairman is gonna be out at the port on the 15th of June at 9:00 a.m. We should have you out of there by 11:00, so you can go to your other meetings for the rest of the day. But that will be that second meeting physically at the port, where the customers of the port are looking forward to being able to see you in person. And we're gonna have a number of speakers related to security, customs, regulations, Coast Guard, and all the federal agencies that oversee the port. So, you have a direct, firsthand knowledge of who is at the port from the federal side, US Customs, Coast Guard, USDA, FDA, and they will give you a presentation of what they're doing at the port every day. So, that will be on the 15th of the month of June at 9:00 a.m. at the port. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
That's all you have? All right. Commissioners, do you have any other comments?
I was just gonna ask, can you tell us about the, you had an event last night, or recently, some sort of restaurant? I don't know, it comes up on my Facebook feed, sponsored, and you're like the most interesting man in the world. Had you it. I mean, it was, you know, you were looking cool there. You're looking debonair. So, but I didn't quite get the full picture of what it was that had been going on. So, tell us more about it.
Well, we have one of the hub users that has opened up on, actually Fruitvale Road, a small cafeteria restaurant. And he invited a number of international food companies to be able to expose their, or to present their products. And so, that's what it's about. It's kind of an international, you know, they're all from Miami, they're all from Honduras or Guatemala, coming here. And the restaurant, of course, is not here, is in Fruitvale Road, but we had that event last week, yes.
All right.
Thank you for noticing.
Do you recall the name of the restaurant? We'll give them a free commercial if you do. I remember, it started with a C or a K, I think?
It's called Bocata, which means sandwich in Spanish.
All right, on 70. All right, thank you.
There are no other comments. Thank you, Carlos, for braving the traffic and getting down here. We look forward to seeing you in June at the port. They're always fun and informative meetings, and I look forward to it. So, if you have nothing further, and your staff has nothing further, and Commissioners have nothing further, I will end this meeting of Seaport Manatee.
Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. Reopening the county commission meeting, and we're gonna continue to jump around a little bit. We're gonna go to item number 43, which is confirmation of appointment of the Director of Public Safety Department. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Washington.
Caught me. I was taking a drink. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do appreciate this opportunity. Through a long application process, reviewing resumes, interviewing many candidates, we were very fortunate to be able to identify our next permanent Director for Public Safety in Jody Fisk. Jody joined the county in November, and since that date, she has been nonstop in her commitment to make Manatee County better as it relates to public safety. Aside from her resume that you all have had an opportunity to take a look at, she has been totally committed to doing the work. She's passed over other opportunities within the state to remain here in Manatee County, and I'm extremely proud to present her to you this morning. So, thank you very much, Jody Fisk.
Good morning, Jody Fisk, Public Safety Director. I just really want to say thank you very much. Decided a while ago I wanted to come to Manatee County, and it was getting to work with the team, but truthfully, it was the Piney Point activation where I saw how involved everybody in the county was. It was really the first time in any of my activations I saw how many of the Commissioners stayed at the EOC with us during that activation, and were very involved. And the team behind me is just so awesome. I can't say enough about them. And we are coming into hurricane season. I think we're as ready as we've ever been, if not more. And I'm just really excited to be able to continue to work with the county, with the county this time, and not just as your state liaison. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Oh, we're clapping already. We haven't held the vote just yet, but I, you put us in a corner now. So, I was really pleased to see Mr. Washington made this selection. I love that Jody has not just worked with us during Hurricane Ian, but that she has state-level experience, and she's worked with so many different communities during disasters, be it something like Piney Point, where it's man-made, or if it's something, you know, more like a hurricane or flooding, that sort of thing. And so, she's seen how all these other counties do it. She's evaluated the best and the worst ways of doing things. She came in, and it seemed like the Public Safety Department really sort of culminated around you from the very beginning. And we make these decisions today, right? And then, when we're in the cone, you know, on Bay News Nine of the hurricane, then we look back and we go, damn, I hope I made the right decision back in June. But I think we have. I guess it's May, it's not June, but that's all right. But you get my point. You look back and you think, gosh, I hope we're ready. And I think we're making a very good decision here, and I think it'll instill confidence in us further down the road. So, all right. I do need a motion pulled up.
Oh, it is. I apologize. So, we have a motion, Madam Clerk, to approve Ms. Fisk as the Public Safety Director. And motion's been made by Commissioner Ron, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bearden. We'll open this to public comment at this time. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to comment on the appointment of the new Public Safety Director? Okay, we'll close public comment, and we can cast our votes now.
All right, Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Fisk. Now, we can applaud. Thank you so much, ma'am. All right. Yeah, off to work. So, now, we're gonna move on to proclamations. Well, first of all, is there anything that, are any items on consent that Commissioners would like to pull? Any consent items you'd like to see pulled? Okay, hearing none. Then, we'll move on to proclamations at this time. And we will start with, Commissioner Ballard has motorcycle safety. We'll start with that one, and then we'll have national gun violence awareness. And then, Commissioner Ron asked the Memorial Day be last. So, no problem. We're happy to oblige. Oh, yeah, we'll entertain motions. We'll do this verbally. Entertain motions to approve proclamations. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Ron to approve proclamations, seconded by Commissioner Ba. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. So, we'll start with the adoption and presentation of proclamation designating May 23rd as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Manatee County. Commissioner Ballard.
Whereas Florida's climate and scenery make motorcycle riding an attraction in the Sunshine State, and riders consider our roadways to be some of the nation's best for riding. And whereas motorcycles are increasingly used as a regular means of transportation, and whereas a motorcycle is an important form of transportation for commuting, touring, and recreation. And whereas, as a matter of safety, it is necessary to develop appropriate driving habits to handle these vehicles on Florida roadways. And whereas, more than a million drivers in Florida have a motorcycle endorsement on their driver's license. And whereas, to prevent injuries and deaths on Florida's roadways, motorcyclists and motorists must be vigilant in their efforts to share the road and ensure the safety of everyone. And whereas, Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month raises public awareness for a lifetime of safe motorcycle riding. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners in Manatee County, Florida, that the month of May 2023 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 23rd day of May 2023, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida, signed by our Chair, Kevin Van Austinbridge, and attested by the Clerk, Angelina Colaniso. This is an extremely important proclamation, and I will say that over this past month, I have had the sad realization of learning that a preschool teacher that taught my daughter, she actually lost her husband, who was only 32-years-old, in a motorcycle accident here in the region. So, this is definitely something that hits close to home right now, and so we'll be praying for that family and hoping to raise that awareness. Thank you all very much. Do we have anyone here to accept the proclamation?
Is anyone here to accept the proclamation? I believe there is. Yes, sir. Please state your first and last name and your county of residence, and we'd like you to say a few words.
Royce Dunick from Manatee County. I'm here on behalf of Caesar Garcia. I'm also a motorcycle rider. Lost a lot of friends on motorcycles in the area. And this was great. I thank everybody for making a proclamation here. And, yeah, I just want to say thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, next up, we have Commissioner Bearden, who is going to be reading the adoption and presentation of proclamation designating June 2nd as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Manatee County. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proclamation, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida. Whereas, our great nation cherishes the rights and freedoms bestowed upon us, its citizens by the Constitution, including the Second Amendment, which affirms the rights of the individuals to keep and bear arms for self-defense and other lawful purposes. And whereas, the preservation of public safety is paramount concern for every responsible citizen and governing body. And whereas, it is essential to foster a culture of responsible gun ownership, respect for the rule of law, and awareness of the potential risk associated with firearms. And whereas, promoting awareness about the impact of gun violence and encouraging responsible firearm ownership can contribute to the reduction of tragic events while respecting the rights of law-abiding a citizen. And whereas, it is imperative to emphasize strong families in close-knit communities, which serve as vital sources of support, guidance, and accountability in preventing violence. And whereas, we commend the efforts of responsible gun owners, law enforcement agencies, and community organizations that actively promote gun safety programs, secure storage practices, and resources for mental health support. And whereas, National Gun Violence Awareness Day provides an opportunity for all Americans to unite in their commitment to preventing tragic events of gun violence and promoting constructive dialogue on this issue. And whereas, Manatee County has proclaimed being a Second Amendment sanctuary county to reduce gun violence and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that June 2nd, 2023 shall be known, designated, and set aside as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 23rd day of May 2023, signed by our Chairman, Van Austinbridge, and Clerk of the Court, Angelina Colaniso.
Thank you very much, sir. And our Director of Public Safety, Jody Fisk, is here to accept.
Jody Fisk, Public Safety Director.
Your first official duty.
It is my first official duty. No, I think this is important. I was actually at the Broward County EOC after the Parkland shooting. I was the point person at the Pensacola shooting. Responsible ownership and recognizing the impact that this has on our community is very important. So, I'm very, very pleased to accept this proclamation today. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And that further goes to what I had said earlier about, you know, working for the state, how many different emergencies she's been activated. And I didn't even realize you were at Parkland. So, just further reassurance. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. All right, and thank you, Commissioner Bearden. Lastly, it's Commissioner Ron. Adoption and presentation of proclamation designating May 29th, 2023, as Memorial Day in Manatee County. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I stand before you, honoring this great day, and solemn day, and most respected day, the United States of America, celebrating those that made the ultimate sacrifice for this nation and to keep it free. I'd like to thank my two Marine brothers that are up there for their service that they've done. I'd like to thank any other veterans in the room, and family members they might have lost in any conflict that we've had here in the United States. Memorial Day means a lot to all of us, especially those that have served, and those family members that have lost, people that have, service members that have gave the ultimate sacrifice. With that, this proclamation, whereas, we pay tribute and honor to those that paid the ultimate sacrifice in service of our country. With heaviness of heart and sense of gratitude, we hold reverence to the sacrifice our service men and women, parents, children, loved ones, brothers and sisters in arms, friends, and all those known and unknown. And whereas, Americans have raised their right hand to sign on the dotted line, serve in battle, lay down their lives to defend peace and freedom against threats of tyranny and aggression. And whereas, it is important to show our gratitude for all the soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines, Coast Guardmen, and Merchant Marines, Mariners who have died in service of our great nation, that we might continue to enjoy the liberties that we deeply cherish. And whereas, we the living must carry the torch so that the sacrifice of those who fought to preserve our way of life... sacrifice of those who fought to preserve our way of life will not be forgotten. And whereas the citizens of Manatee County wish to express their lasting gratitude and admiration, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that May 29th shall be designated, shall be known and designated and set aside as Memorial Day in Manatee County, Florida, and calls upon all citizens, schools, businesses, clubs, news media, to pay tribute to our veterans by displaying the flag of the United States of America and by conducting and attending Memorial Day ceremonies throughout Manatee County in recognition of those who have made the absolute ultimate sacrifice in the past and current conflicts, fought with bravery, conviction, and pride in liberating free and independent people, adopted with a quorum present in voting this 23rd day of May 2023, signed by our Board Chair, Kevin Van Austinbridge, attested by the Clerk of Court, Angelina Colaniso. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Who is here to accept?
Good morning. Renee Medina, Manatee County Veteran Service Officer and Manager. I would like to thank Commissioner for reading this. Thank you very much for accepting the proclamation. We have several wonderful events scheduled for this weekend and Memorial Day throughout Manatee County for all of our citizens to partake in. Manatee County Veterans Council will be presenting on Monday, May 28th, at 9:00 a.m. at the newly-named Donald L. Courtney Veterans Park for our annual Memorial Day service. That is located on Riverwalk behind Manatee Memorial Hospital. Services will start at 9:00 a.m. We also have the Sarasota National Cemetery. They'll do their presentation on Saturday, May 27th, at 10:00 a.m. They have a wonderful Gold Star Family presentation and concert, and they will be laying flags on each of the gravesites afterwards. Brayton Marauders Military Appreciation Night is Saturday, May 27th, at 5:00 p.m. It's a wonderful event for our veterans, free entrance and discounted prices for their family members that are accompanying them. Also, in Anna Maria, they have their annual Memorial Day ceremony on Monday, May 29th, at 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. They will also be having the city's 100th anniversary. So, they're going to have birthday cake and refreshments afterwards. So, it should be a very nice event. And that's going to be Monday, May 29th. Lakewood Ranch is hosting their 2023 Tribute to Heroes Block Party and Parade on Sunday, May 28th. On that evening, it's going to be a pre-block party that starts at 6:00 p.m. and the parade starts at 7:00 p.m. on Main Street in Lakewood Ranch. And finally, SRQ Vets will be hosting their 8th Annual Memorial Day 5K Hike, which is Saturday, May 27th. Registration starts at 8:00 a.m. The race will be at J.D. Hamill Park, which is 199 Bayfront Drive in Sarasota. I encourage all veterans and their family members and all citizens of Manatee County to partake in these wonderful events and honor our fallen soldiers, sailors, and comrades. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm so glad you read off the list of events because it's, you know, it's a reminder that it's not about saving money on a mattress or a used car over the weekend. And it's not appropriate to say Happy Memorial Day. The appropriate thing to do is to honor the fallen and to attend events like this. Commissioner Bearden, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, you know, Memorial Day is definitely one of the most special days that we get to celebrate. And we're celebrating those who, you know, were KIA. And I could tell you that myself, when I went down to the recruiting station on March 20th, 2003, the anniversary of OIF, I had the opportunity to serve with probably, I would say, the most patriotic Americans in my generation, because we all knew what was going on. But because of that, I had a lot of friends that are no longer with us today. And it'd be a disservice of us not to go out and have that hot dog or that beer or, you know, get to honor them. Because I know that there are a lot of veterans that suffer on this day. But I just want to encourage those that, because of them, you know, we're here today. And, you know, when you've had to escort a mother to receive your best friend's Purple Heart, it hits home. And so, I appreciate this proclamation today and us really remembering those who served and who are no longer with us today. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I wanted to thank the Board for adopting this proclamation for Memorial Day. But more important for me, I want to thank the strong Veteran Services team that we have here in Manatee County. The Board has supported over the years that I've been here. They have continued to fight for the benefits and services that these families have earned, unfortunately through the loss of life of their loved one. And those 50,000-plus veterans that call Manatee County home, they should be very proud of the support that they have by this Board, by the support that they have in Veteran Services and around this nation. And again, as Commissioner Van Austinbridge said, it's not about the mattress sale. It's not about the car sale. It's about remembering those individuals who've given their lives to allow us to sit here this morning and have this meeting and go forward. So, again, I want to thank you all. Thank you very much, Renee.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well said.
If I could add to that, based on Mr. Washington's comment, a lot of veterans don't realize that the PACT Act, probably the biggest piece of legislation for the VA in the last 100 years, was passed last September. And our office right now is inundated with those claims. And we're making sure to honor those veterans who were suffering from exposures from burnpits and fuels and all kinds of atrocities overseas. And we continue to fight for those veterans. If you were affected by burn pits in certain areas and certain dates, please reach out to our office so we can assist you with those claims. People are still dying from these wars that they have fought in. They're still dying from these exposures on a daily basis. And, you know, our office is working hard to make sure that those families and those veterans are taken care of, and they're getting all of the benefits that they deserve. So, if you're not aware of the PACT Act changes that occurred through the VA legislation in September of 2022, please reach out to our office so we can assist your families and your veterans. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for that message. And thank you for so much that everything Veteran Services is doing for the veterans of this county.
Our pleasure, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Commissioner Ron. All right. We will move on then to citizen comments on future agenda items. It's limited to 30 minutes. We have six folks who have signed up. And so, when we call your name, you come to the microphone, you'll have three minutes. Please start by stating your first and last name and your county of residence. We'll start with the Reverend Matthew Grunfeld, followed by Erin Campfire. Reverend, even though it's redundant, I know, but I still need you to state your first and last name and your county of residence, please. And you'll have three minutes to speak on a future agenda item. So, folks, future agenda items are items that are not on today's agenda, but will or are likely to, or you would like to see appear on a future agenda. If you're speaking on something that is on today's agenda, just wait. And as we call those items up and we hear them, we will hold public comment on them at that time. Sir?
Thank you. I'm Matthew Grunfeld. I am a resident of Manatee County. I am the rector of the Episcopal Church of the Enunciation on Anna Maria Island, one of the 15 member congregations of Stream, stronger together, reaching equality across Manatee. I am joined by a number of members of our organization today. Ours is an interreligious, multi-ethnic, county-wide, nonpartisan, direct-action organization guided by the common vision of justice taught by our respective faith traditions. Since forming over two years ago, we have heard stories from people in our congregations who are impacted by the affordable housing crisis in Manatee County. We have heard stories from teachers who know their students are living in automobiles because their parents can't afford rent, and that affects their academic performance. We have heard stories of children who graduate college and either have to move back home with parents or seek a life elsewhere because Manatee County housing is too expensive. We have heard of people who commute here from places like Port Charlotte and Arcadia because they cannot afford a place to live. We've also heard of longtime residents who have experienced massive hikes in rent in recent years. As county commissioners, you have a unique position as policymakers to address this problem. You all were invited to join us a few weeks ago at Harvest United Methodist Church, where we gathered 500 concerned citizens to address you on the subject. We were pleased that Commissioner Cruz attended and agreed to create policies and practices to create at least 1,000 new units of affordable housing in the county for fiscal year 2023-24 for persons making less than 80% of area median income, or about $69,000 for a household of four, and $48,000 for a single-person household. This range includes people whose work is vital to our county, teachers, first responders, and service industry employees, just to name a few. The need in our county is actually at least 11,000 new units, but we know that 1,000 is a pragmatic goal for next year. For those of you who did not attend, we missed you. And I come bearing 2,000 petitions from those who did attend, asking you to commit to this goal. Everyone deserves a safe place to live. And on behalf of those who sent me here with these petitions, I ask you to commit to creating policies and practices to create at least 1,000 new units of affordable housing in Manatee County for people making 80% of area median income or less in the coming fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend.
And is there someone I can?
Yes, sir. This young lady right here will take that.
They're divided by Commissioner.
Next is Erin Campfire. That's a fun last name. I like that.
Thank you.
So, please state your first and last name. Obviously redundant. You'll have three minutes to speak on a future agenda item.
Wonderful. Good morning.
County of residence.
My name is Erin Campfire, and I live in Manatee County. And I worship at Peace Presbyterian Church in Lakewood Ranch. Too many people here in Manatee County can't afford a safe place to live. Of particular concern are households who are earning less than 80% of the area median income, which is about $69,000 for a family of four, or $48,000 for a single-person household. Manatee County is at least 11,000 affordable housing units short of what is needed. I ask that you all support policies and practices to ensure that the county creates at least 1,000 new units of affordable housing for the next fiscal year of 2023-2024 for those households making 80% or less of the area median income. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Concerned citizen Glenn Gibellina is next. That's how it reads on the screen, followed by Ruth Herencar. First and last name, county of residence. You'll have three minutes.
For the record, Glenn Gibellina, Manatee County. And I was at that Stream meeting. It was a fantastic turnout. And George, thanks for showing up. So, I sent this letter to you nine days ago. I'll read it real quick. Dear Commissioners and Administrators, I will be talking on this subject matter today and everyone after that until things change or improve. Manatee County has lacked the vision for the last 20 years that I know of, and will not be corrected by the free market when wages don't keep up with market rate. Rental and homeownership bought on the influx of out-of-state buyers and others' forces in play. The developers haven't done it, and they're not going to do it. It's as simple as that. You're approving 5,000 homes, 3,000. Did you ever ask the question, is there going to be any workforce housing in your development? And if so, and if not, why not? You want hundreds of people to go out there to do services, but they can't live in those walled communities. Drastic times calls for drastic measures. It's simple as that. Let me give you an example. I don't know why this letter's not up there. Yeah, well. So, let's take the tourist industry, right? The engine that drives this county, pretty much, other than farming. Do you know the cook, the waitress, and the bus boy? 50% of the people that work in the tourist industry, in restaurants, can't make a living. Can't afford to live here. And, you know, we have restaurants that are actually building their own housing. This is unacceptable. Wages don't keep up with inflation. Alice, you know, I'm a big supporter of Alice. That's the Bible. 50%, pretty much. Where's my things here? Okay. Manatee County, 48% live below the Alice threshold. You know what that means? That means 168,000 of your voters, your citizens, are struggling to make ends meet. Those are hard numbers. That's the Alice Report. They know better than everybody. That's the Bible in the industry. Palmetto, 51%. 10%, let's not forget, 10% of 422,000 citizens that you swore an oath to protect and serve, live in poverty. Every district, you have people that live in poverty. And when I bring to you, bring some workforce housing, everything blows up. Oh, not in my district, not in my backyard. Yes, in your backyard, you need to provide, or at least induce, housing. 30,000 units short. We're not 11,000. 30,000 units short, and the 1,000 won't even keep up with demand.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mrs. Ruth Herencar. Ruth? Okay. Then we'll move on to Charlotte Wright, followed by Dr. Capers.
Good morning. My name is Charlotte Wright, and I live in Manatee County East Side in Braden Woods neighborhood. And I worship at Harvest United Methodist Church. Too many people in Manatee County can't afford a safe place to live. Of particular concern are households who make less than 80% of area median income, about 69,000 for households of four, and 48,000 for a single-person household. Manatee County is currently at least 11,000 affordable housing units short of what is needed. I ask that you support policies and practices to ensure that the county creates at least 1,000 new units of affordable housing for the next fiscal year of 2023 to 2024 for households making less than 80% of the area median income. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And our friend, Dr. Capers, first and last name, county of residence. And you have three minutes, ma'am.
Jerita Capers, resident of Manatee County and senior pastor of Rogers Community United Methodist Church here in Bradenton. Too many of the persons in Manatee County can't afford a safe place to live. Of particular concern are households who make less than 80% of area median income, about $69,000 for a household of four, and $48,000 for a single-person household. Manatee County is currently at least 11,000 affordable housing units short of what is needed. I ask that you support policies and practices to ensure that the county creates at least 1,000 new units of affordable housing for the next fiscal year 2023-2024 for households making less than 80% area median income. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Those are all the names that we have that signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone, though? We'll open this up to the audience. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward, yes, ma'am, and speak? So, when you come to the podium, please just state your first and last name, your county of residence. And you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Shannon Gaver, and I am in Manatee County. I'm with Women's Voices of Southwest Florida. I attended the Stream meeting. And thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for coming. Commissioner Van Austinbridge, I heard you were sick that day, so I hope you're feeling better. I was a little disappointed to see that no other commissioners had shown up, because I do think that this is a really important issue, houselessness, and then also the criminal justice aspect of it as well. My little six-year-old, who I'm sure you guys all have seen, she came with me. And because she understands the importance of having a home and the safety and security of having a home. So, I would really like to encourage you all to be at the Stream celebration on June 12th. I know you have been invited to it. So, please, please show up. And thank you. And thank you so much for committing to build affordable housing in Manatee County. I have a daughter who's 24 years old, and they're just struggling to get by with, she lives with her boyfriend, and the two of them together just struggling to get by. Last year, I met a mother who, with a couple of other moms and Women's Voices, we helped to house. She was living in her car. She's a single mother with two kids. Her rent had jumped by $500 a month, and that pushed her out in the streets. That's right here in Manatee County. Thankfully, she does have a home now, but it took a lot. It was a big eye-opener to me to see how somebody could just lose their house like that and have these children to have to support, and that is just allowed. I mean, just, it's unfathomable to me that in this county where we have wonderful resources, lots of empty homes, and to know that some people just, it's out of reach for them. So please come on June 12th. I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Yes, sir. Or sir. You'll all get here eventually, don't worry. First and last name, county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak on a future agenda item.
Yes, Frank Stubbleo, okay. I have property in Manatee County, and I reside in Sarasota, okay? I'd just like to point out that I'm developing an affordable project, and I'd just like the people here to understand and know the commission's having very positive, okay? It's 192 units. They're all going to be less than 80%. So I would like everybody to know that they are addressing it, at least they did with our project, I can tell you that now, and that, you know, even when there's some opposition from some of the local residents, okay? We chat about it, we try to, you know, meet whatever the problems may be, but I want the people here to know that for our project, they've been very good, very supportive of the affordable housing. So I want to bring it up. You hear all the nags, I wanted to hear the good thing, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir. First and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak on a future agenda item.
Thank you, Chair. Jason Kraft. Jason Kraft.
What's your county of residence, sir?
I'll repeat that.
Your county of residence?
Manatee County.
Thank you.
That was a rhetorical question, wasn't it?
I'm sorry?
That was a rhetorical question, wasn't it?
No, sometimes, oftentimes, we have crowds of people who are not from Manatee County.
I've all...
Let's pause this time for just a second, so he can get himself together here.
Well, it is a privilege to be here, and what I would like to introduce myself to is a Braden Housing mission statement. The preface of which brings me here today is actually indicating that everybody has a mission statement, but it needs to be accomplished. Braden Housing mission of the, is provided safety and quality in affordable housing choices to families, as I have just listened to. The HUD has a mission statement that also wishes to bring or create strong, sustainable, inclusive communities and qualified, affordable homes for all. And my purpose here, my goal is a BHA resident is to assemble a community center and choice neighbors, that is a grant from the HUD, that will create a BH resident, help politely communicate their house needs, that they deserve to be repaired by a BHA maintenance worker that has authority to construct a solution. Also, the community center is to offer grants the government provides, like the ACP. I'm not sure how well people are highly aware of what resources the government provides, and I think that's a responsibility that the executive director must be applying. And what brings me here today is wanting to really listen and learn from Commissioner Amanda Billard. I think she's the one that had, would have the most receptive answers to help me learn what I can perform as far as an establishment as much of, let me get to the point. My purpose of being here this morning is to have the privilege to listen to Amanda Billard, the second vice chair of District Two, answer to my question, and I need you to know that I just want to learn who has authority when there's delinquency or fraud or corruption that is not a fact that will broadcast but be hidden. I need you to know that I am a former BHA commissioner who realized how disassembled and of interest to be team-oriented with the plan, that is, to administer the resident's standard welfare that is to be suitable, provided with the HQS, the Housing Quality Standards. As an attorney, you may already know that HQS, the Housing Standard...
Take an extra 30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
Take an extra 30 seconds.
Thank you. There's just many laws, like the S E M A A P. It's a Section 8 that establishes the minimum criteria for the health and safety of program participants. Who is in control of the BHA Executive Director, or what HUD's employers are responsible to proficient, professionally, legally, and respectfully learn what is corrupt and fraudulent and what is sincere to the HUD's description of how the executive director's function is notified? As you may already know, the executive director's been to the court quite often and spending $50,000 or more on an attorney's correspondence, but there is no playground on the Braden Housing location. There's many disorientations that the residents don't know. They don't know about the LIHAP, the Limited Housing Energy Efficiency Program. They do know from the $14.1 billion that has been given for internet and the lifeline as a phone because of it's been broadcasting through radios.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate that. What we'll do is Mr. Iran is going to come through the door here in just a minute, and he will get your information, and he'll give that to Commissioner Ballard, and she'll reach out to you so that you can have a one-on-one discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time for public comment? Yes, ma'am. So please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Donna Cooley, and I worship at St. Mary's Episcopal Church in Palmetto, and I live in Manatee County. Too many people in Manatee County can't afford a safe place to live. Through our stream organization, we listen to people that have sad, sad stories about their living conditions. One of my people that I work with, she has a brother that can't afford affordable housing. He's a veteran. She has a granddaughter that unfortunately was, got into a little bit of trouble with a DWI that goes on her record. She had a daughter that was a preemie, so she went through all that and, you know, the problems with medical bills and stuff like that. She's living with her mother-in-law, so there's four people in a two-bedroom house, and they are struggling to find a place to live. So of particular concern are households that make less than 80% of area median income, which is about $6,900 for a family of four, or $48 for a single person. Manatee County is currently at least, at least 11,000 affordable houses units short, and as we heard, that is much, much more today. I ask that you support policies and practices to ensure that the county creates at least 1,000 new units of affordable housing in the next fiscal year of 2023-2024 for households making less than 80% of the area median index income. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time to address the board regarding a future agenda item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to the board for comments, and we have Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner Ron on the board. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, I want to thank everyone from Stream for coming out. They told me they were all going to come out with the petitions, and I forgot about it until I saw you out there in the audience. But yeah, it was a great event. It's my second year in a row attending Stream's big annual event, as well as a few other meetings. And, you know, they do things the right way. They have a mission and a goal, and they've put people together, and they thoughtfully sit down and meet with commissioners, meet with people in the community to make their requests. And more importantly, they make the requests with actionable items and specifics. In our case, the 500 units below 80% last year, which we far exceeded, and the 1,000 this year. You know, and it just shows, you know, when a community comes together and can work with all of us up here and work with each other, things can get done. I mean, we recently had 300, and I pulled these numbers, 358 affordable 80% and below units completed, but it takes about two years to complete a project, 18 months to two years. So all of those were based on previous initiatives that the board had. We've altered it. We altered livable Manatee to make the monetary portion of it go from 120% to 80%, which was in large part based on that meeting we had last year. Now we have 1,367 pending and under construction units at 80% and below, 1,000 more than what we had recently completed, in large part due to that. We have a developer here right now who's building 192 of them at 80% and below, and it's a great project. It takes advantage of a number of the incentives we put in place for the sole purpose of trying to get these houses. But I do hear what you're saying and what Glenn's saying and other people are saying from a location standpoint. If you actually map out the pending and under construction projects going on right now, they're all in a very small corridor. They run straight up and down, kind of Onico and San Moise and downtown. I mean, you've got Whitfield, you have two in Onico, you have two in downtown. That's pretty much the five that are pending right now. It's great that they're near employment centers. It's great that they're near existing infrastructure, but it doesn't help all of those places, every place else in Manatee County that still have a Starbucks that needs a barista, and still has a school that needs a teacher, and still has a community that needs a police officer. So hopefully, the next step here, because I think we've worked on some incentives that are getting people down to the 80% threshold, the next step is trying to make sure the incentives are a little more broad in terms of the community. There's a few things I've been talking to Rowena and some others about possibly pulling back the 25% threshold to something less, trying to find some common ground that'll encourage more people to take advantage of these incentives we've put in place, which many people have, but many people haven't. So that's the next step, and something I'll be working on this year. So thank you again for reaching out to me consistently. I'm always happy to speak with you, and we'll see what we can get done in this next fiscal year.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank the Reverend and Stream also for meeting with me. We had an hour-long meeting, it was very enlightening, and I appreciate the time that you spent and the education you gave to me. Yeah, we have 192 units going up in District Four in Whitfield Preserve, and for the workforce housing, let's take creativity. 750 square-foot units, that's creativity that we need to see more of to get to that affordable housing, get to those numbers, to get to the 80% of AMI so those folks can afford it. When we have, the issue we have is a lot of times, and I think Commissioner Cruz has spoke to this, is this is a great project that's brought into a community on a piece of land that probably was never going to be built on in an industrial area. Well, the neighbors all get upset about it, because they think it's going to be Section 8 housing or whatever. There's going to be great apartments, and what's going on in Onico and San Moise and other places in the county are great places for people to live. I think what we need to do is have more education to the public about what workforce housing is, because everyone thinks it's Section 8 housing, or it's HUD housing, and it's not. So I appreciate Stream for continuing what they're doing. Thank you, sir, for bringing your project forward and moving forward on it, and thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all my comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Well said by both of you. All right, that concludes citizen comment on future agenda items. Let's move on to the consent agenda before our 10:30 break. No one pulled anything from consent, so we're ready for a motion on consent. We have a motion by Commissioner Cruz to approve consent, seconded by Commissioner Baugh. We'll open consent up to public comment at this time. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to make public comment on today's consent agenda? Any items on today's consent agenda? Yes, sir. Concerned citizen Glenn Gibellina, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to comment on items on today's consent agenda. Please note the items that you're just, that you're addressing.
So for the record, Glenn Gibellina, I want to talk about the school district land. It was 14 when I signed up. I see it got bumped to 15, so I don't know what happened. In any event, you know, when I look at my, when I look at my tax bill, we've got parks, police, fire, school, county, all on one bill, and then they distribute the money. It amazes me that the need for bus drivers in school districts and school teachers, those needs are not being met. We need a collaborative effort from the school board to the county, to workforce house developers. So what I proposed is, this is like 2,000 acres. The school's asking for 20. Why doesn't the school or the county at least approach the school? You know what? I think you should ask for 25 acres, and then we'll bring in a professional workforce house developer, right? To build those units on school property, go into a 50-year law, and guarantee those school teachers and bus drivers that they can live, work, and play in that gated community. You wonder why we got traffic problems? Because people can't afford to live where they work. So that's, there needs to be more collaboration. You guys should be headhunting workforce housing developers and invite them into every part of our county. The second project is Rye Ranch, right? Same scenario. Same scenario on Rye Ranch. Again, and I wrote public comment, teachers are being priced out of housing, but districts across the country are finding solutions. So the school district, I don't know if Senate Bill 102 has anything to do with it, but certainly they can build workforce housing on school property, and they should. They should do it on every new school that the district builds, and bring in professionals to do the development and manage it. They still own the property, they're guaranteed income for workforce housing, particularly school district employees. This concept that, oh, we have, we got a walled community, $400,000, $500,000, you're good enough to teach us, and you're good enough to protect us, and you're good enough to send EMS out when they're having a heart attack, but you're not good enough to live in this walled community. That concept has got to stop. You need to ask every developer that comes in here, you're building 5,000 houses? How much is workforce housing? No, and why not? The other thing is, there should be parcels of land outside these developments for workforce housing. You know, I've been beating the drum here nine years.
Thank you, sir.
Do a lot of homework.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak on today's, any items on today's consent agenda? Public comment on consent agenda items. All right, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. Commissioner Cruz is on the board to speak, sir.
I was going to point out the one thing that Glenn mentioned. This is the school board asking a private developer with private land for 20 acres of land to build a school. The school makes sense for that developer because they're building a lot of houses, and they need a school for those kids, but it's not our position to go to a private developer with private property and say, give somebody else even more of your private property. If the developer wanted workforce housing, and I wish they would, they would just build on five acres or sell five acres to a developer to build it. Why would they give it to the school? Like, a school's very specific use, so their only alternative effectively outside of charter schools and so forth is to work with the school district. But if the developers of Taylor Ranch or Rye Ranch, as your two examples, wanted five acres of workforce housing, they could monetize that and sell that to a developer to build workforce housing. They wouldn't need to involve the school board in any way, shape, or form with that. So I hear what you're saying, but that's not really our position to dictate to people what they're doing with their land. I'm not going to look a gift horse in the mouth over the 20 acres to insist on an extra five. We're getting out of our lane here on that one.
Yes, sir. Thank you. There's no one else on the board for comment. We've held citizen comment. We've held citizen comment. There's a motion to approve consent by Commissioner Cruz, been seconded by Commissioner Baugh. We may cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, the consent agenda passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. It's ten-twenty-six, Commissioners, so let's take our customary ten-thirty recess for ten minutes, and when we return, we'll, we've completed consent, so we'll start the regular agenda. We're in recess for ten minutes. Okay, welcome back, everyone. Moving along through our agenda here at our regular meeting, we're on item number forty, advertised public hearings, presentation upon request, financial management. Item number forty is adoption of Resolution R-23-085 regarding the infrastructure sales tax to add projects in the transportation category and adoption of budget amendment resolution B-23-112. Would anyone like a presentation?
No.
Okay, hearing none. We'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward at this time to speak on item number forty on today's regular agenda? All right, seeing no one, we'll entertain motions. Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Commissioner Baugh to approve. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ballard. No one's on the board to speak at this time. We've held public comment. We can cast our votes. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to item number forty-one, adoption of Resolution R-23-076 regarding the infrastructure sales tax to remove a project and amend seven project scopes in the parks and community facilities category and adoption of budget amendment resolution B-23-106. Would anyone like a presentation? Okay, we're going to open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on item number forty-one on today's regular agenda? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. We'll entertain motions. We have a motion by Commissioner Baugh to approve. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ron. We've held public comment. There's no one on the board to speak. We can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, it passes, item number forty-one passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Move on to advertised public hearings, presentation scheduled. Item number forty-two, convention and visitors bureau, adoption.
Two o'clock.
I apologize, that's a two o'clock time, sir. And I don't plan to be here at two o'clock, but, okay. I don't know. We will move on to item number forty-four, which is community and veteran services. Item number forty-four is appointment of one applicant to the children's services advisory board. Mr. Washington.
Hi. Excuse me, I'm Kristi Hagan, children's services program coordinator. We are looking for your recommendation for your appointment of a DCF representative for the advisory board. Children's Services Advisory Board. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am. Who is our applicant?
It is Melissa Leslie.
Okay. So Melissa Leslie is the only applicant, so.
She sure is, yep.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ballard to approve Melissa Leslie as the, for the once of a open seat on the children's advise, children's services advisory board, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Satcher. We'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward at this time to make comment on item number forty-four? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. We can cast our votes at this time. There's no one on the board to speak. And she is approved, Madam Clerk, by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
Move on, thank you. Move on to item number forty-five, which is financial management, approval of administrative procedure authorizing the implementation of surcharge on debt, credit, and other electronic Madam CFO.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Administrator, and County Attorney. Today, we are coming here to the, to bring good news, and good news as a change in our administrative policy. It is not a required motion by the board or action by the board. Simply, we're just coming to give you the, the good news of this new administrative policy. Back in April, in February eleventh, I came to you with the concern and I was challenged by the board and the county administrator to seek opportunities on reducing the cost that the electronic credit cards, debits, and other electronic payments were costing the county. As of, as per Florida statute, two fifteen point three two two, the local governments are entitled to, are allowed to collect fees, all the fees through credit cards and so for, and electron, other forms of electronic payment. But at the same time, we are, it, it is giving the local governments the approval to charge surcharges or, as we know, convenience fees, to pass on the, the, the cost of the credit card fees into the users. At the same time, we are, we also offer other means of electronic, more free and more economical methods of payments. But this ti, at this time, we're bringing the polit, a formal policy for, for, to be instituted in Manatee County. There's many counties that already have changed into this new convenience fee and passing on the user fee. So we are not the only county, actually, we are one of the last counties that are actually implementing this. The savings to the county is approximately three point nine million dollars that, that we would be not, not paying on a yearly basis. For so many years, we have been doing so. We have a small presentation to actually kind of like, let the, inform the, the citizens and the, and the board about the, how it is the flow of the, of the credit cards and, and, and the structure of it. So with that, I have William Constanzo. He is one of my senior fiscal services managers who has taken on the lead for this analysis and review of all the. and review of all the, the services that the county uses to cert, do credit card fees and so forth. So with that, I'll leave William Constanzo with the presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Washington, Mr. Clegg, Ms. McLean. FMD was tasked to review merchant fees for fiscal year 2022, but we are also tasked to understand how and why they were generated through county operating systems, so we can understand the process. There we go. I'm sorry. So in the last five years, merchant fees have doubled in the county from one point eight million, or one point nine million, it's in my eyes, to where we're projecting three point nine million in fiscal twenty-three. The two departments that generate the most merchant fees due to credit, debit, and electronic transactions are utilities at fifty percent and administration and development services at forty percent, forty-seven percent. So ninety-seven percent of all merchant fees are generated by those two departments. And the remaining three percent, as you see to the right side, are all the remaining departments here in Manatee County, and they generate three percent, or approximately a hundred thousand dollars, of the three point nine million that is generated in total. So it's a very small amount for the remaining departments. Looking at it by vendor, the vendor that charges us the most merchant fees by far is ACI Payments. We might remember them as O-Pay or Official Payments. They changed their name a few years back, a few years back, but it is still ACI. FiServe is the gateway processor for utility payments. They're at five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars of merchant fees per year. Bank of America, we receive approximately seven hundred thousand of merchant fees from Bank of America, but eighty percent of those transactions are generated by FiServe through utilities, passing it through to Bank of America. I'm going to explain the process a little bit better in a few moments. And then finally, American Express is the, by far, the, the least of the four, at about forty-seven thousand dollars a year of merchant fees. If we dig in deep to the utilities department a little bit more, for example, one point nine million dollars of merchant fees generated through utilities, ACI is still the largest vendor charging us for merchant fees for permitting that gets charged to utilities. And then it's FiServe passing through charges to BOA and AMX, and then finally, FiServe itself is the, these are the four largest vendors that are charging through utilities. What I, what I wanted to do today was just provide a little bit of background information. Manatee County is like a corporate headquarters with operating divisions across the United States in different geographic regions and different industries, which means we have different operating systems and different standards. Each of our departments has that same concept. What goes for the scale house doesn't go for the library, and certainly doesn't happen for impact fees and permitting. So everybody has a different and unique operating system, and it requires the proper software to integrate. Hence, we have many different methods in how we collect money here in Manatee County, as well as many different ways to process credit cards. You know, for example, we, we collect cash and check. We have drop boxes, debit, credit, ACH. We use point-of-sale systems. We have online banking. We have telephone. We have websites. These are all ways that we collect monies for our goods and services. And in particular, we have different ways, the way we process debit, credit, and electronic payments. And we have county point-of-sale terminals. We have third-party vendors that handle it front to back, and then gateway processors that just start the transaction and pass them along to another vendor. Hence, we have combinations all over the county and different combinations of each. So what I'd like to say, because the services are different in each department, there's not a single-source solution. Therefore, using an old cliche, one size does not fit all. Briefly, I just wanted to go over four basic steps in the credit process, so we understand what I kind of prefaced a minute or two ago. The gateway processor, we all have done this. We go to the local deli, we use our card, or we go online and we enter our credit information. There is a gateway to start the credit process. That's the first step. From there, it goes to our settlement bank, in our case, it's Bank of America, where they, they consolidate the transactions, and then they pass them back to the actual issuer of the credit card. We all have them. What's in your wallet, it could be our credit union, it could be a way, it could be a department store charge. Those are all the issuing bank or financial institution. And there are thousands of those type of institutions, which means there's a thousand different rates that come back through the interchange, which in the credit process is the largest piece of a charge. And just, for example, a commercial card or a cash-back card costs us more than other cards, because they're offering incentives to use them. Therefore, the charge is higher. So again, there's thousands of different rates with thousands of different cards. And then there's American Express, and they kind of run the same process, but they, they bill us separately or independently of the other charges. So what we're here today to say, it's possible that we could pass these merchant fees instead of absorbing them here at the county, and that's where we're seeing no more. I also did want to say, every one of those things that we just talked about, gateway, settlement, interchange, all charge us, every, every step of the way. So we have some very, very succinct solutions. We think we can eliminate approximately ninety-seven percent, or three point seven million of those merchant fees by using third-party vendors, in particular, in utilities and the development services departments, to process the debit, credit, and ACH payments for, from the users of those services. And we're calling this Phase One of a two-step process to attempt to eliminate these charges for Manatee County. So Phase One would be to implement this administrative procedure that authorizes our departments to go to a convenience fee or pass-through model. And then we're asking utilities and development services to either renegotiate existing contracts or seek vendors that will be able to pass through these charges to the consumer. And to the credit of utilities and development services, they've already begun their reviewing of their existing contracts, and we know that utilities is looking at a new vendor. These are excellent steps to move from a county-absorbed model to a pass-through model of merchant fees. In Phase Two, we're going to ask the remaining departments in Manatee County to evaluate their systems, so they can determine if a pass-through model is efficient and effective. A perfect example would be, one of the libraries only has about eighty-three dollars of merchant fees a year. Would it be cost beneficial to the county to spend eight or nine hundred dollars on a piece of equipment to do that? It will take ten years to recover those costs. So what we're, what we've asked for in that procedure is that each department has the ability to seek an exception of passing through those merchant fees, whether it's by industry standard, or cost efficiency, or effectiveness. But the chief financial officer of the county will have the ability to review that request to say, yes, we still need to eliminate, or your exception is granted. So just a perspective, right now in utilities, the proposal from the new vendor for debit and credit and digital wallet payments is two dollars and fifty cents per transaction, a fee to use your credit card. The fifty cents for an ACH is just that. It, it's a flat rate. You have the, your vendor withdraw the money from your account. It's a fifty cents per transaction. Now, in the development services area currently, that, they're in the process of negotiating that contract. We, the county, are paying upwards of two point seven percent on every dollar that's incurred or charged on a credit or debit card. And as you'd imagine, impact fees, permitting, planning, those are quite large transactions. And then finally, it's only one dollar to do an ACH, an ACH for that same large transaction. So we're offering a very cost-effective means for someone to have an ACH for one dollar versus, say, two, three percent on ten thousand dollars. So there is a much affordable option that we can pass through to the consumer.
Thank you, Bill. Just as a point of reference, this is a very important administrative policy, so that I am asking the Board to approve it. It is not, it is not a actual common practice to take administrative policies, but it is something that we felt it was important for the Board, and that's why we're seeking approval of the, this particular administrative policy.
So to be clear, ma'am, are you looking for action from the Board?
Approval for us to execute, and from now on, it becomes a formal administrative policy. Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Baugh to approve, a second by Commissioner Satcher, and Commissioner Bearden is on the board for comment. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great job. I would have to say that you guys were spot-on on your presentation, and the way that you presented it, I would think that you came from that industry. So everything, I feel really comfortable with this and the way that you guys are moving forward with it. So great job, great job on the presentation, and I appreciate all your hard work on all the, the looking in and studying what this is all about. So, great job.
Yes, sir, thank you. We're going to open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to comment or address the Board on item number forty-five on today's regular agenda? Anyone like to address the Board on item number forty-five? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. It's a motion to approve by Baugh, seconded by Satcher. There's no one on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, item number forty-five passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Well done, Financial Management. You have one more. Don't go anywhere. Number forty-six is Approval of American Rescue Plan Changes and Establishment of the General Fund Government Services Payroll for Fiscal Year Twenty-four for general, excuse me, generational impact projects. Madam CFO.
Again, Sheila McLean, CFO, Manatee County. Item forty-five, we're coming back today. On May second, we had a work session to discuss the opportunity about approving a couple of motions in order to, relating to ARP and creating generational impact projects. Generational impact projects, we said we would bring it as a later work session to discuss it, but what we are coming here today is so that we can finalize and close the gap on getting the motions approved that we had discussed on work session, on the work session on the May the second. With that, we would like to give you a little bit of a refresher of what was said, since it's been a couple of days already. If you may, if, if I may be allowed to present a small presentation that will, Constanzo, we go over, just as a refresher, there's smaller, it's a smaller presentation. So with that, William Constanzo.
Would anyone like a small presentation?
Is this the same thing we just heard?
It is. That's why, that's why I was bringing it up. Okay, I think we can pass on the presentation, we've seen it once already.
Okay, so then with that said, I have, in your packet, I have the motions that are requested today. There's three of them. The first one, and you might want to help me here, Bill, for a second, is to approve the administrative changes to the original ARP project list.
Okay, we'll give you guys just a second. It's gonna be, it's broken up into three motions. She can read the first one again if you need. Would you read it one more time?
Page of your, of your.
I know, but this is, this is for IT. If you could read it one more time.
Okay. Approve administrative changes to the original ARP project list.
You got that, David? In the meantime, we're going to open up public comment for all three of the motions that we'll be making. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to address the Board on item number forty-six, the American Rescue Plan Changes? Anyone like to address the Board on item number forty-six today? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. And shall we hold a verbal vote? Okay, would you state your motion one more time, please?
Yes, sir. Approve administrative changes to the original ARP project list.
Well, now we have it on the screen. So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baugh, and it has been seconded by Commissioner Ballard. Commissioner Satcher is on the board for comment. Sir?
Mr. Chair, I want, I would like to wait for the second item, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so we've held public comment. There's no one else on the board to speak. We can cast our votes on the first of the three motions at this time. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. What is your next motion?
My second motion is to approve creating a new project in the ARP list for the FY24 payroll government services.
New project payroll government services. We're working on getting that pulled up. In the future, when we have multiple, you just bring them written down for them, so they can have it queued up ahead of time.
There was an attachment on the agenda.
Approve creating the new project list has been, motion has been made by Commissioner Ballard, has been seconded by Commissioner Ron. Commissioner Satcher, did you want to address this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There may not be a perfect place to say this, so I'll just say it now. You know, looking forward to when we kind of finalize some of the things that we're going to be doing as far as our impact projects and those types of things. I just want to encourage the Board as we move forward that we do need to, I am hoping that we have a level of due diligence for, you know, anyone that is receiving county funds, taxpayer funds, and be sure that our citizens align with, with some of those, those organizations and programs. I know that's vague. I'm hoping that it can stay vague, and I don't have to go into any specifics in the future, but I just, I don't want people to be surprised later either. So I am mentioning, it's our duty not to put money towards what forty percent of our citizens, sixty percent of our citizens don't want to see happen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. We don't have anyone else on the board to speak at this time. Motion is to approve by Ballard, seconded by Commissioner Ron. We can cast our votes now. And it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. And your third motion, ma'am?
Yes. The third motion is to approve either Option A or Option B to fund government services payroll from uncommitted ARP funds.
And where can I see Options A and Options B?
It is slide number seven of the presentation.
Okay. That's all right, I'm pulling it up right now.
So Option one.
Oh, there we go, perfect.
Yeah. Option one is taking the fifty-one million dollars that was identified as uncommitted in the, in the list that we showed on the work session on the second.
Right.
And then Option B is taking the fifty-one million dollars plus the one point five million dollars that we showed that were, was still reserved for a purpose, but because we, we moved that item from that ARP list as a continuation project in the general fund, then that money moves along with it. So that totals a fifty-two million dollars, five ninety-nine, one oh nine.
Okay, perfect. We have, Commissioner Ballard is on the board. Commissioner Ballard?
So I am in favor of Option B here. My understanding is that that's a project that is likely moving forward in a, in a different way. Those funds are not, are not needed at this point, so we can use those uncommitted funds toward our, our other projects that we've proposed at this point.
Exactly.
Does anyone object to having staff put Option B up for approval on the screen? Okay, so let's pull up a motion to approve Option B. Should I assume, yep, whoop, Commissioner Baugh beat you to it. So that, that motion is made by Commissioner Baugh, it's seconded by Commissioner Satcher. We've held public comment, and no one else is on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes now. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you so much, Financial Management.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, we're going to move on to Property Management. You guys rock.
Thank you.
Item number forty-seven, Execution of Contract for Sale and Purchase of Surplus Property Between Manatee County and Radina Adams and Brandon Gibbs. An execution of deed for property located at twelve oh nine Seventy-second Street Court East in Palmetto, Florida, three four two two one. It's in District Three. Hmm, oh, that's the Rabonia one, isn't it? Okay. All right, turn this over to Property Management, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Attorney, County Administrator. My name is Charles Metter. I'm the Property Acquisition Division Man-
Acquisition Division Manager. What we have before you today is execution of contract for some surplus land. Just a little bit of background on how the county acquired this land. Back in two thousand and fifteen, it was a sheeted to the county. So we've had this land since two thousand and fifteen, and then back in November of two thousand and twenty-two, our board adopted a resolution officially declaring this land a surplus. And so, our team put it out for bid, and the highest bidder was twenty-one thousand dollars, and their intention of the land is to build a home for their kids. And so they live, I think, three or four houses down, if I'm not mistaken, from the, from the current land.
All right, thank you, sir. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ron, it's been seconded by Commissioner Baugh. We'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the board on item number forty-seven on today's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. There's no one on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Congratulations. All right, we're going to move on then to item number forty-eight, which is execution of contract for sale and purchase of surplus property between Manatee County and Horatio Cruz Yanez and Anali, Anali something with an O, Sanchez. And execution of county deed for property located at one zero one one Seventy-first Street East, Palmetto, Florida, three four two two one, District Three. I prefer when people are going to butcher my name, they just say Van something.
No problem.
So that's what I went with. Sir?
All right, so similar to the prior agenda item, this one also is sheeted to the county back in April two thousand and fifteen. Similar to the prior agenda item, in November, our board declared this parcel as surplus, and so we put, we put it out for bid, and the highest bid was eighteen thousand, one hundred dollars. We invited them to come today and speak and tell you their intentions on what they'd like to do with this property. The way it was explained to us is they also want to build a home, this is a build of a lot for their, for their future kid, is the way it was told to me, so.
And these people live contiguous to the property, I believe?
Right next door, I believe. Is that correct?
Yep, okay.
Yeah, they are, they're here, but they live right next door.
All right, next door. Thank you, sir. Is anyone who would like to come forward from the public to address the board on item number forty-eight on today's agenda? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bearden, it's been seconded by Commissioner Ron. There's no one on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes at this time. And it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Congratulations.
Yay.
All right. All right, we're going to move on then to, does anybody want to request any future work sessions? I have no idea where we're going to schedule them, but, as we're pretty packed, but does anybody want to request future work sessions?
He wants to request we get rid of some of the ones we already have scheduled.
He wants to request a work session to eliminate work sessions. Kidding.
No more briefings for work sessions.
Citizen comments. We don't need to do that because we didn't hit our thirty minutes, so we'll get on to County Attorney comments. Mr. County Attorney is item number fifty on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Authorization to proceed with national search for a county administrator.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I put this on the agenda simply so the board would have the opportunity to bless what you've already seen in your individual briefings with the executive search firm. I do have a representative scheduled to, to be here, but he cannot be here until one thirty. If you, I'm comfortable if you want to move forward with it now, if you don't have a lot of comments or questions, but if you, if you do have comments or questions, we need to wait till we come back after lunch.
Why don't you do your best, why don't you do your best presentation?
I'll do the best I can.
And afterwards, if there's additional questions and comments, we'll go from there.
When, when he and I talked last week, we, we didn't really plan to do a formal presentation. We feel like this is ready to go. There is a brochure and a schedule and a couple of bullet points about public outreach in the agenda package. We just wanted to make sure the board had the chance to meet and talk about it and approve it before we move forward. It's rather unorthodox to move forward with a national search without giving your board a chance to at least talk about it and vote on it. But if the board doesn't have any changes to it, and the board's comfortable with where we are based on the briefings you've had with the executive search firm, then it's fine to approve it, and they're, they're ready to start advertising today. That's the intention, assuming the board gives us the go-ahead to do so.
All right, thank you, sir. I did read through the brochure, and I submitted changes to him, and he actually put all of them in. Lakewood Ranch was not mentioned in the original brochure at all, nor was parish, nor was the challenges that, I don't know if Lakewood Ranch would be happy with that, nor were the challenges that the county is facing when it comes to growth and infrastructure. So I, I did ask him to put all of those in, and then I also felt it was important to state that Jim Boyd is going to be the future Senate President, and that, you know, Vern Buchanan is the Vice Chair of Ways and Means. I mean, those are valuable assets to have if you're coming in as a county administrator, so.
Was Rebonia mentioned?
There was no, no Rebonia, but they, you have thirty-five thousand people in Lakewood Ranch. I mean, I thought, I thought it would be, you know, a slight to ignore it altogether. Yes, yes. Anyway, so--
The fastest growing master planned community.
I, I, I told him it was the fastest growing master planned community in the country. I, I told him that as well. But, but I didn't, he, he threw those in and, and emailed everybody back this big packet, and I was good with it, and I didn't, I don't know if anybody else submitted changes or not, but I'm happy with the process so far. Any other comments from board members? Okay, so, Madam Clerk, we have a motion to proceed with item number, to approve item number fifty, which is authorization to proceed with the national search for a county administrator. The motion's made by Commissioner Ron, it's been seconded by Commissioner Ballard. We'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board on item number fifty on today's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment, and we can move forward with the vote at this time. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously, unanimously by a vote of seven to zero.
Say that one more time.
Thank you very much.
All right, so do we want to hold Commissioner comments now? Does anyone have any Commissioner comments? Okay, so we'll close Commissioner comments. Mr. Administrator, do you have anything? Oh, wait, wait.
Sorry, were you talking about Commissioner comments?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I do have--
Commissioner Baugh?
I, I don't want to lose it fast enough. I just, I just wanted to bring up, you know, I think from this, from me looking at it, the board, I think we had a terrific group of meetings in DC last week. I think we've had some great advancement, advancements on getting some things approved, some funding. I think this time, I've been to DC probably nine or ten times in, in my tenure on this board, and I felt like that we had more meetings, more gratifying meetings, and probably were much more successful this time in DC than before. I just want to say a big thank you to Ballard Partners, to Dan McFall. I feel like that he really put a great itinerary together, and, you know, it's amazing, I, I can tell you. I mean, if you look at the meetings that we had, whether it was on the Senate side or the, or the House side, we had great meetings with our representatives in DC and, and other representatives that, of course, don't even represent this area, and, and some not even necessarily Florida. And, and we were well received, and I think that we're pretty blessed in that regard. And I just wanted to do a shout-out to Ballard Partners and say thank you, and to also just mention to the residents, I know some received emails from somebody on our trip to DC. And, you know, if you have to spend, you know, a few thousand dollars to get back millions, it's worth it. So, and you know, it's not, I mean, we've, I don't know why this year would be any different. We've done it every year, and no one seemed to really care too much in the past, but I think this was probably the most effective year that we've had, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to mention that.
I would agree with that. I thought Ballard Partners did a great job, Dan did a great job, great lineup, and I, and like you said, we spoke, met with several members of Congress throughout the state of Florida, and, and outside of the state, obviously, the, the Transportation Chairman as well. But I, I hope that we'll continue as, as we keep going back to keep forming those, building on those relationships. Every year, the former FDOT Secretary we met with was, that meeting alone was worth the entire trip, honestly. That was a fantastic meeting.
And I must say that, you know, when you look at the gentleman that you're referring to, you know, he is so well-connected in, in what he is doing today for transportation, and I've already been in touch with him, and he's, you know, he's definitely someone, he's a mover and shaker in DC and Tallahassee, both.
Yeah, he is.
So, good person to know, good person to keep as contact, as a contact, and good person to have his help, you know, this year to get our--
It was very productive. The, the three freshman Commissioners did a great job up there as well. You all really left your mark on DC in a positive way, so I think it was a, a good trip all around. Any other comments before we recess our meeting?
Mike Ron?
Okay, so we, we have a two o'clock time certain, so unfortunately, the timing didn't work out the way we thought, so we're going to have to recess this meeting until two o'clock. We're in recess. We're in recess. It's item number 50 on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Authorization to proceed with national search for a county administrator.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I put this on the agenda simply so the board would have the opportunity to bless what you've already seen in your individual briefings with the executive search firm. I do have a representative scheduled to be here, but he cannot be here until 1:30. If you, I'm comfortable if you want to move forward with it now, if you don't have a lot of comments or questions, but if you, if you do have comments or questions, we need to wait till we come back after lunch.
Why don't you do your best?
I'll do the best I can.
Why don't you do your best presentation? And afterwards, if there's additional questions and comments, we'll go from there.
When, when he and I talked last week, we, we didn't really plan to do a formal presentation. We feel like this is ready to go. There is a brochure and a schedule and a couple of bullet points about public outreach in the agenda package. We just wanted to make sure the board had the chance to meet and talk about it and approve it before we move forward. It's rather unorthodox to move forward with a national search without giving your board a chance to at least talk about it and vote on it. But if the board doesn't have any changes to it and the board's comfortable with where we are based on the briefings you've had with the executive search firm, then it's fine to approve it and they're, they're ready to start advertising today. That's the intention, assuming the board gives us the go-ahead to do so.
All right, thank you, sir. I did read through the brochure and I submitted changes to him and he actually put all of them in. Uh, Lakewood Ranch was not mentioned in the original brochure at all, nor was parish, nor was the challenges that, I don't know if Lakewood Ranch would be happy with that, uh, nor were the challenges that the county's facing when it comes to growth and infrastructure. Um, so I, I did ask him to put all of those in. And then I also felt it was important to state that Jim Boyd is going to be the future Senate President and that, you know, Vern Buchanan is the Vice Chair of Ways and Means. I mean, those are valuable assets to have if you're coming in as a county administrator. So there was no, no rebonia, but they, you have 35,000 people in Lakewood Ranch. I mean, I thought, I thought it would be, you know, a slight to ignore it altogether. Yes, yes. Um, anyway, so.
The fastest growing master planned community.
I, I, I told him it was the fastest growing master planned community in the country. I, I told him that as well. But, but I didn't, he, he threw those in and, uh, and emailed everybody back this big packet and I was good with it and I didn't, I don't know if anybody else submitted changes or not, but, um, I'm happy with the process so far. Any other comments from board members? Okay, so, Madam Clerk, we have a motion to proceed with item number, to, to approve item number 50 with, which is authorization to proceed with the national search for a county administrator. The motion's made by Commissioner Ron. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ballard. We'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board on item number 50 on today's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment and we can move forward with the vote at this time. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously, unanimously by a vote of seven to zero.
Say that one more time.
Thank you very much.
All right, so do we want to hold Commissioner comments now? Does anyone have any Commissioner comments? Okay, so we'll close Commissioner comments. Mr. Administrator, did you have anything? Oh, wait, wait.
Sorry. Were you talking about Commissioner comments?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I do have.
Commissioner Baugh.
I, I don't, wasn't fast enough. I just, I just wanted to bring up, um, you know, I think from this, from me looking at it, um, the board, I think we had a terrific, uh, group of meetings in DC last week. I think, uh, we've had some, uh, uh, great, uh, advancement, advancements on getting some things approved, some funding. Um, I think this time, I've been to DC probably nine or 10 times in, in my tenure on this board, and I felt like that we had more meetings, more gratifying meetings, and probably were much more successful, uh, this time in DC than before. Uh, I just want to say, um, a big thank you to Ballard Partners, to Dan McFall. I feel like that he really put a great itinerary together. And, um, you know, it's amazing, I, I can tell you. I mean, if you look at the meetings that we had, whether it was on the Senate side or the, or the House side, uh, we had great meetings with our representatives in DC and, and other representatives that of course don't even represent this area and, and some not even necessarily Florida. And, and we were well-received and, um, I think that we're pretty blessed in that regard. And I just wanted to do a shout out to Ballard Partners and say thank you. And, uh, to also just mention to the residents, I know some received emails from somebody on our trip to DC. And, uh, you know, if you have to spend, you know, a few thousand dollars to get back millions, it's worth it. So, and you know, it's not, I mean, we've, I don't know why this year would be any different. We've done it every year and no one seemed to really care too much in the past, but, uh, I think this was probably the most effective year that we've had, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to mention that.
I would agree with that. I thought Ballard Partners did a great job, Dan did a great job, um, great lineup and I, and like you said, we spoke, met with several members of Congress throughout the state of Florida, um, and, and outside of the state, obviously, the, the Transportation Chairman as well. But I, I hope that we'll continue as, as we keep going back to keep forming those, building on those relationships. Every year, the former FDOT Secretary we met with was, that meeting alone was worth the entire trip, honestly. That was a fantastic meeting.
And I must say that, you know, when you look at, um, the gentleman that you're referring to, you know, he is so well-connected, uh, in, in what he is doing today for transportation. And I've already been in touch with him and he's, you know, he's definitely, uh, somewhere, he's a mover and shaker in DC and Tallahassee both.
Yeah, he is.
So, good person to know, good person to keep as contact, as a contact and good person to have as help, you know, this year to get our.
It was very productive. The, the three freshman commissioners did a great job up there as well. Y'all really left your mark on DC in a positive way, so I think it was a, a good trip all around. Any other comments before we recess our meeting?
Mike Ron.
Okay, so we, we have a two o'clock time certain, so unfortunately, the timing didn't work out the way we thought, so we're going to have to recess this meeting until two o'clock. We're in recess.